Meeting to order. We have a quorum. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. I will now identify closed session topics. Recommended suspended expulsions, public employee assignment, reassignment, appointment, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints, conference with a labor negotiator, conference with labor negotiator, and conference with labor negotiator, conference with legal counsel, existing lit, anticipated litigation. General public, 1.5, general public comment in any closed session item will be heard pursuant to board policy. The board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. There is no public comment, so we will adjourn to closed session. Session of our board. 3.2. Interpreter Gus Mora will serve as Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of this meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of this meeting room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Gus Mora servirá como intérprete del español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español. Elí por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de la sala de reuniones.
Thank you. 3.3, meaning announcement. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out the public comment form, the green form located on the table in the back of the room. Please hand the completed form to senior executive assistant Monica Andrew before the item comes up on the app. Excuse me, on the agenda. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Ms. Andrews is sitting at the table at the northeast end of the room. Can you, there you are, in the back. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone stand located in the front of the room. Now we'll have our pledge of allegiance by board member Todd Odo.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, all right, I'll continue after a sip of water here. I have a lot. I'd like to report action taken in closed session. In closed session on a motion by board member Nayler, a second by board member Vegas, the board unanimously voted to appoint Adrian Leal to the principal, to the position of principal of Manuel H. Hernandez Elementary School. Mr. Adrian Leal has served as principal of Houston Elementary for the last eight years. Mr. Leal served VUSD for a total of 24 years. He started as an elementary teacher serving at Houston and Fort Creek's Elementary School for a total of eight years. He has also served as an assistant principal at Ivanhoe Elementary for three years and Houston Elementary for a year. Prior to his current appointment, Mr. Leal served as the principal of Elbow Creek Elementary for four years. Prior to his employment with VUSD, Mr. Leal worked with Dos Palos Elementary as a first grade teacher for two years. Mr. Leal earned a Bachelor of Arts in Liberal Studies from California State University and a Masters of Arts in Mathematics Education from Fresno Pacific University. He holds a multiple subject teaching credential and an administrative services credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Mr. Adrian Leal. In closed session on a motion by board member Belt and a second by board member Vegas, the board agreed unanimously to appoint Carrie Montoya to the position of principal of Hurley Elementary. And I believe she's on Zoom? No, okay. All right. Ms. Carrie Montoya has served as assistant principal at Providence Public School District in Rhode Island for the last two years. Prior to her current appointment, Ms. Montoya served as an elementary network instructional support leader for a year. Her educational career started at Palaverde Union School District where she served as a teacher for 10 years before appointing to the principal position at Liberty Elementary. She served as the principal at Liberty Elementary for two years, then was appointed to the superintendent and principal position for Liberty Elementary School District. She served in this capacity for seven years before leaving to Rhode Island. Ms. Montoya earned a Bachelor's of Science in Exercise and Nutrition from San Diego State University and a Masters of Art in Education Leadership from Chapman University. She holds a multiple subjects teaching credential and an administrative services credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Ms. Carrie Montoya.
Board President, Ms. Montoya had some issues joining Zoom. It is 10:00 PM her time, but she did want us to, just to share, she's so very excited to accept the position and sorry she wasn't able to log on, but she's watching right now.
Okay, good.
Probably waving to us.
Okay, congratulations. In closed session on motion by board member Odo, a second by board member Gabby, the board agreed unanimously to appoint Sandra Aguilera to the position of principal of Ivanhoe Elementary School. Ms. Sandra Aguilera started her career in education as a bilingual teacher at Eric White Elementary in Selma Unified School District. She served the Selma Unified School District for a total of 16 years, serving as a resource teacher, principal, and district coordinator of assessment and MTSS. She currently serves as the state and federal programs administrator at Washington Unified School District. Prior to her current appointment, Ms. Aguilera served as a principal at West Fresno Elementary in Washington Unified School District for two years. Ms. Aguilera earned a Bachelor's of Art in Liberal Studies and a Masters of Arts in Education Administration and Supervision from California State University. She holds a multiple subjects teaching credential and an administrative services credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Ms. Sandra Aguilera. Welcome. Was that, oh, I guess that's it, yeah. Okay, the board took the following action in closed session on a motion by board member Case Spears Saleno and a second by board member Nayler. The board voted seven ayes and zero nays to approve the settlement agreement between the district and the parties representing OAH case number 2023020416. The board took the following action in closed session on a motion by board member Case Spears Saleno, second by board member Vegas. The board voted seven i's, seven zero nays to approve the settlement agreement between the district and parties representing OAH case number, number 2023020887. Okay. 3.6, there are revisions to the following enclosures, number 5.1, 5.3, 7.8, 7.9, 7.10, 7.27. Do I have a motion to adopt the board's meeting agenda?
All motion.
Second? I'll second. On a motion by board member Case Spears Saleno, by, second by board member Gabby, all in favor?
Student board representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Okay, here comes the best part of the board meeting. 3.7, student performances by Mount Whitney Chamber Choir, Mr. Thompson.
You guys want to come on in, I'll do introductions as you guys are heading on in. So tonight, we are very fortunate to have our final VAPAS group performing for scoreboard for this school year. We want to welcome the Mount Whitney High School Chamber Choir under the direction of Tim Howard. They will delight us in two selections. I'm pretty excited about this because I know both of these songs, so that's always exciting. We got Signed, Sealed, and Delivered, I'm Yours, arranged by Alan Billingsley, and Proud Mary, arranged by Kirby Shaw. So at this time, let's give a big round of applause for Mount Whitney High School Chamber Choir. Thank you very much, you guys. Well done. Parents, you're more than welcome to stay all evening with us, but if you did want to take this moment to step out, feel free to follow your students out if you would like to.
4.1, recognition of student representatives to the board, Mr. Thompson.
Well, good evening, Board President Gomoyen, Superintendent Schrum, board members, student board rep, and community and staff. So today, this is a great honor for me as we get to honor our student board reps that are here with us tonight. I will say unfortunately, this is late May, and all of our student board reps are very involved in their schools, and they have lots of events that go on during this time of the school year. So unfortunately, we will not have all of them here tonight, but we do have several of them. And I just want to say, you know, we get to see them here. So our student board reps represent our school, our student body here at each meeting. They come and sit right over here as Mr. Hood is right now, but they do more than just that. Many of them are our presidents on our campuses. They are in many groups. They're in an advisory group with our superintendent to give feedback and to find out what's going on our campuses, just supporting that way. And so they're just heavily involved in our campuses. So yes, we do get to see them up here. We get to see them do board reports with us and engage in this, but they are also doing a lot of things behind the scene. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that as well, as they are active members in our schools and are committed to serving other students and getting their voice out in this fashion. So we just want to say thank you. So here in just a moment, I'm going to call up their names and have them, again, there will be a few that will not be here tonight. Students, what I'm going to ask is come up, get your plaque, go and stand up front, and then once we get all of you together, we will bring the whole board and we'll get some great pictures of you guys, okay? So here we go. So our first one is Alec, Alex Elick. And I'm not sure if I saw Alex. Alex is not here, but let's give him a hand. I'm not sure if I saw this young man either, but Manuel Casares. Let's give Manuel a hand as he was here this year. This gentleman I know is here. We have Cameron Hood. Hey, Cameron, come on over. She's definitely here. So our next one we have is Tabby Tattersfield.
Sorry, Tabby, I said your name wrong.
I'm not sure Savannah was able to meet with, or be here tonight, but we wanted to recognize Savannah Torres. Believe I got to see this gentleman already tonight, but our next one is Fernando Salivar. Come on up, Fernando. And then last but not least, and he was unable to be here tonight, but Towanda Charmuka was unable, is also our final one. Board members, if you guys would come on up, let's get a picture with these three. Again, thank you guys for your work because we know it's not just what's up front, but also the other work that you've put in this year. So well done and thank you. So stay right where you're at for just one moment.
Yeah, we have another group of individuals that are here with us tonight. Now, we're going to spotlight them in just a few minutes in one of our board reports, but I didn't want to miss an opportunity because we have a few people in our audience tonight who might be standing here one day in the future, and that is, as these individuals also serve as part of my superintendent advisory, we also have an elementary, middle, and high school student advisory. And so I see a few faces that are here tonight to be spotlighted, but if you would come up, we'd love to have you in a photo with this, with these folks in our board as well. So if my student board reps could come up, we'll take a photo to join this group. And I know a couple of you are here.
5.1, spotlight on good things happening in the district, Superintendent Schrum.
Let's try that again. Good evening, President Gomoyen, board members, and our community. Excited to share our spotlight. And I just, you know, as I get ready to share the spotlight, just want to thank all of our students, our teachers, our families. Everywhere I go on our campuses, I see our students working hard to finish strong. I see our teachers incorporating that theme into their classroom and their class discussions, and so many creative things that they're doing to help everyone finish strong. And so just a shout out to all of those individuals. So as we move into the spotlight, we'll get right to it. Congratulations to our Hobe Noble graduates at Ridgeview Middle School for the work they put into their character development. Thank you to our staff, our facilitators, and mentors who make this work possible. Very excited about this program growing. There's also a version for our female students as well, and so really excited about the connectivity and the mentorship that occurs in this, in this program. So thank you for that. Our students are stars. I mean, this just is a continuing theme. Our reading revolution, we had over 100 students from 14 middle schools all across the area competed in this event. However, we won first place, so congratulations to Oak Grove Elementary, and then I won't mention second place and, and you know, all of those. But we had, I think we also had third place as well, and then other schools participating. And so just a shout out to these teachers who make these events happen because they sponsor these opportunities for our kids. So congratulations to our students and there's the teachers and parents and staff. Redwood Future Business Leaders of America had 68 students compete in the state leadership conference in April. They placed in the top 10 34 times. 11 students qualified for the National Leadership Conference, coincidentally, in Atlanta, Georgia, great place. Another success stemming from this event is Redwood High's Jacob Hutchinson elected as the 2324 California FBLA state president. That's a huge honor and recognition, very excited. He's the first Redwood student elected to this position since 1980. Congratulations to these students and of course, our teachers and sponsors who make these events happen. VTEC student places third. Garrett represented VTEC as a finalist for the San Juan Keen Region for the impromptu public speaking. Additionally, Garrett Keister and Olivia La Marsina from VTEC were both elected and announced as 2324 sectional reporter at a Tulare Kings regional sectional meeting this month. We have incredible representation out there. Congratulations to you both. Continuing family careers, Leaders of America, competitors did a great job at their state competition. The following students won the gold score, Chloe Lawson, fourth in the state, and Siana Morano. The fall, and the following students won broads, Kaylia Corinio, Holland Phillips, and Tiana Murillo. Congratulations to these students. Student scholarship, it's that time of year, I know our high schools are having scholarships nights, a special one to highlight here. Diego Chirinas won the Creative Center's 2023 juried high school art exhibition made possible by a scholarship fund. He beat out over 300 entries to win this scholarship opportunity, and over 40 hours went into the work of art that he produced and sold for $1,000. Not too bad. What an incredibly talented young individual. Our One Viselia Connected work continues. Two prime examples of this, the Neighborhood Churches End Degree Program mentored a group of Houston Elementary School students years back who are now graduating from high school and going on to college. And on the right, you see a group of Golden West students participate in an eight-week-long program with local community-based organizations, changing minds one at a time. Thank you to both of these partners for exemplifying our One Viselia Connected initiative and just what is truly possible for kids when our community partners with us to make great things happening for our students. And I know several of our board members had the opportunity to participate in the Neighborhood Churches program on Sunday, I believe it was. All right, now, you know I was going to have to spotlight this. Many of us have been following LD Amante's journey, and they did win the esports. LD Amante, congratulations for winning both the Ultimate California Region Championship as well as the Ultimate Grand Finals. Just outstanding run for that group of individuals. So shout out to them and their, and their teachers and the, and the team. I know we'll see great things coming from these programs as we continue on. Student Visual and Performing Arts, VCIS, students performed and faculty held their spring showcase, including acting, dance classes, vocal classes, and instrumental program, including guitars and a rock band. Also, you might have seen in the news, we have some future producers and, and Hollywood executives within our ranks of our high school students participated in the Slick Rock Film Festival. And so students submitted their film. This was Tulare County's Slick Rock Film Festival, was screened at the Fox Theater. Redwood Video Program won seven rock awards, including Best of Show, but we had several students from all of our high schools, I believe, participating, and just what a great skill and future these students have. Another one, we also had several of our staff and board member in attendance. We had a VAPA spotlight on our mariachi performance, amazing performance at the Fox Theater from Golden West and Valley Oak students, accompanied by other individuals from our community, against all his Dance Academy. Just what amazing participation. I was able, unfortunately, wasn't able to attend, but thankfully, some folks in the audience sent me some videos, and it was absolutely astounding. So I hope this becomes a yearly event. And then, of course, we are also opening some dance and Vaclorio classes within some of our schools and looking to grow that program as well. So I think just another way for our kids to be connected. Uh, to the school and culture uh as well. Our district music festival, again, myself, many of our board members had a chance to attend this. I had no idea what I was in store for. Um, and just what an amazing tradition. I have heard this is. Uh, we we might or might not have a board member that even participated in this uh as a student. And now. Uh, that individual students are participating in it. So just a great rich tradition in Visalia. Our music teachers and I mean, I just can't say enough. I mean, they did this night after night, two performances a night. In addition to, you know, teaching during the day, right? And all of those things just. But the excitement on their face because they were able to do this for our kids. Um, it was just amazing. Seven performances across four days. It was a week filled with incredible talent. All of our elementary schools and middle schools participating. Uh, just a wonderful event and look forward to that. Uh, and and thankfully that's back. I know it was off for a few years and so so glad to have that back and. It it just, if you if you have a chance to go next year, need to go. It was amazing. Our health sciences medical program and opinion ceremony last week, eighty-five students graduated from intra-district certified nurse assistant. And medical assistant program. We congratulate these students for their hard work and their accomplishments. I see some familiar faces. Uh, in that image there. Uh, love these programs. I mean, you we know students and we were speaking with students in this program. Some are taking this experience and and are getting ready to graduate and going to college, interested in maybe becoming a doctor. There were others in the group that were interested in their career pathway that already I think had been hired. Uh, by community organizations and they're walking right out of high school into a career and and may choose to advance that as well. It's just. Uh, wonderful that we have these programs and opportunities. And then for some, they get in the program and decide that's not for them, right? And that's another good opportunity, right? Know early on what you're interested in. Another opportunity really excited about, uh, we shared a few weeks back, our new partnership with Fresno State University. Um, I had um, uh, one of our staff members reached out and shared that upon hearing about this, several students went to the council room and wanted to know. How could they become part of this program? And so that tells me that the more we share about these opportunities, the more our kids know that there are pathways that exist for them. We want this to be in our middle schools. We want every middle school kid entering high school and their parents to know. Listen, we're just getting started. We have three guaranteed admission pathways already established. With UC Merced, Fresno State and Fresno Pacific. You do what you need to do in school. We're gonna get you to a college if that's where your, you know, future lies, because that's a future that can be open to anyone. And so thank you so much to Fresno State was a great opportunity. Um, this is gonna, they so many other pieces connected with this program. Kids getting a library card early on campus visits. You know, um, a mentor sort of person to kind of help guide them along the way. So if you're an eighth grader and you want to go to Fresno State or you're thinking about college, we can get you connected. Right now. So really excited about what this is gonna do for the future of our students. CSEA picnic this weekend. Want to thank our classified employees. Uh, school wouldn't be open without you. Um, and so we certainly appreciate it. I know a couple of our board members and staff had a chance to go to their picnic this weekend. And so we just wanna honor and celebrate them and we have a classified employee week kicking off and we'll be doing some. Uh, things for them and recognition and just thank you for what you do every day. And speaking of some of our amazing classified. Uh, employees, I went to a concert today that all of our fourth graders had a chance to go to. Today, thanks to our transportation team. Every fourth grader at every school in our district had a chance to go see the Sons of the San Juan Keen. Concert uh at at held at uh LJ Williams. It was absolutely amazing. Uh, and the the buses were all lined up. You know, they ran their route, they came back, they got kids to shift, over three thousand kids. Got to experience this today. And that's just an example of what's possible. Uh, not only from our programs, but then uh our classified employees that make those things happen and just just a huge shout out to them. Also to our Board of Education, on Friday, we had a district planning session. This district should be very proud. We have a board that is committed to this job. Uh, it's not just a job to them. It's a passion. It's a commitment for students. Um, and we did a lot of great work. We talked about what do we want the future paths for our students to be? We talked about the vision and mission of our district, what that should be. Well, uh, we talked about how do we handle future growth? A lot of important conversation uh we had on Friday and and our board and our district team was engaged for the whole day. And so I just really appreciate the direction and leadership. That this board is advise is is um preparing for us. Um, my advisories, we had a few uh come up and and take their picture. Want to give a shout out to uh our advisory. So I have an elementary, a middle, a high school student advisory. As well as a different employee advisories that meet throughout the year. Uh, and again, just want to thank those that came here tonight. Thank you for being on the advisory. Your voice is important. Um, and I, and again, I assure the board, uh, they do not hold back. Their voice is heard and and they express it. And that helps us know how we're doing as a district. And so I look forward to strengthening this. One of the questions we asked them last week was. What do we need to do to make this better for next year? And so overwhelmingly, they want to meet in in public, I mean, me me meet in a person. And so we're gonna create some opportunities to do that, uh, and they want to be more engaged. And so we're gonna talk about how they can do that uh and to have their voice heard. So thank you so much, so much to those students. Uh, also really another group that um a couple of us had a chance to meet with and. Assistant Superintendent De Mayo had a chance to sit and listen to some of the stories of our students. Um, and you know, every teacher on campus, every administrator on campus, everybody at the district level. We should be taking time to listen to the voices of our students. Because when we do that, we hear a lot. Um, we hear good things. That we want to continue that that we want to strengthen and we hear things that. That aren't so great. Um, and that we need to do better, but we're not gonna know that if we don't take the time to listen. And so. Uh, a shout out to our district leadership team uh for putting together, this is part of our uh, uh, Black Excellence Initiative that this board, of course, supported. And this is the Yujima Collective, the Black Leadership Advisory Council. Uh, through this group, we're looking for ideas on how we can improve and enhance the black student experience in Visel Unified. And so we had a chance to meet with them last week. Uh, they were very interested in how do they expand their work? Several of them were going off to college, but expressed. Hey, I've got a sibling that's coming up in Visel Unified or uh, you know, whatever that might be, brother, sister, and. Um, you know, what can we do for them? And so this is beginning at the high school, but I think a middle school group is getting ready to meet soon. And then we're gonna talk about how do we expand this to elementary as well. So uh, thank you to our student services team for their leadership. And for our students and the community and our counselors and others that help uh put that together. And I look forward to having them come and share more and speak with our board as well. Retirement celebration. Congratulations. Nearly forty employees at our retirement celebration earlier this month. Please stay connected. And if you want to come back and substitute or or do something like that, we'll welcome you back with open arms, but. Uh, well deserved on your retirement and several of us again have the opportunity uh to do that. Our strategic plan facilities master plan surveys are out. We need your input. Links are online. Uh, we have thousands of people that have responded so far to some of the surveys and we're not gonna stop. This is gonna run through the summer. So tell your friends, tell your neighbors, community members. Whether you're connected to Visel Unified or not, we want every voice captured in this. Some of our social media spotlights, Police Week, Speech and Language Pathologist Day. And Toby, the support dog on Sequoia Campus. I was not invited unfortunately to that, so we'll have to take care of that for next time. We all could use some therapy. Uh, dog every now and then. Um, spotlight on a classified staff. Again, as we said, uh, we thank you so much as we begin to enter uh classified employee appreciation week. Thank you for supporting the students and staff. Uh, so that every day we can be successful. You see some of the things that they do. Um, and again, we would not operate as a district without them. Um, and so thank you so much uh for your leadership within our district. And again, as I said, we are about finishing strong. Um, and take it from the voices of our of our littlest friends here. We are gonna make it. I think it's seven more to go. And I know, not that I'm counting, but I know we're all gonna finish strong. And so I think we have a couple of words that will leave you with.
How you can finish strong is by thinking of how you want your life to be. Make a list of how you're gonna achieve that and take small steps every day until you get to your dream life.
What does it mean to finish the school year strong?
It means to use all your hard work to strive all the way to the end.
It means that I'll have more options for what I'm gonna do in the future.
Staying organized by the help of my teacher, Ms. Austin, uh, cuz she gives us schedules and calendars for events coming up.
To me, finishing the school year off strong means pushing through the challenges and never giving up.
It means to persevere through all the challenges and get good grades.
To never give up and to finish the next school year off strong.
To stay motivated to land.
It means to me to put your best foot forward in everything you do and to never give up.
It means to always have a positive attitude and try new things.
To finish the year strong, you've got to review what you've done in the past. Set goals, make a plan and find people who can help support you with that plan.
To get more stronger and learn more.
You can count money and you know how to do it.
To me means following through with what your intentions and your goals were that you set in the beginning of the year.
To work hard and stated permanently.
Is knowing that you worked hard and that you earned everything you worked for.
To me, finishing the year strong is to enjoy the journey that you took on.
To finish the year strong is to do good in all of your classes, pay attention and be nice to everybody around.
It's about trying new things. You'll never know if you're good at it if you don't try.
It means finding that second wind and finishing off the year with the person you envisioned yourself at the beginning of the year.
Means thinking something about yourself, whether it's being on to class on time or practicing your instrument or doing more homework. And doing better than you did yesterday every day.
For our students to be better than what they came into.
Needs to feel confident to do the next level like high school or college.
That you've come this far, you're almost done. Do your best and don't ever give up.
And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you, uh, Superintendent Shrum. Five point two Thinking Special Education Systems. Um, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, um, Mr. De Mayo.
Thank you, Board President Gamoyan. Mr. Shrum, school board members, I am very excited to be here with you tonight to share just a bit of information. About where we are with our special education supports. So you may recall, a few months ago, I came to the board and asked. If we might get your approval in working with an outside consultant, a thought partner, if you will. To help us really think through our current systems and and how we might think differently. So I'm excited to share with you that that in fact has been done. We've got some initial information we want to talk about a little bit. Um, and I want to do first, thank my two wonderful colleagues from the Special Education Department. Our administrator Carrie Stevens is with us tonight. Um, and also, let me see if she's, yes, Tina Shirley is in the back of the room to our director of special education. So just as a reminder, the great thing about special education supports. Earlier this year, we worked on our core beliefs and commitments and support for students. Lives in each of these three areas that we've committed to working hard on because that's what we believe. And the work we're doing with our most in need students really lives in these three areas. So what we wanted to share with you tonight is just a little bit of information, just to really ground us where we are. You know, the state of California recognizing that that every child in our state needs support in a different way. Some students need support in areas called special education. And what the state tells us is that support needs to be in an inclusive setting. In order to provide students with an opportunity to be successful after high school. Further in our district, we add to that. And quite simply, we want to make sure that every child in our system gets what they need to be successful. And this report really solidified that philosophy for us. So what we find is historically in the state of California. You typically would anticipate about ten percent of your population benefiting from special education supports. And our school district in years past, we matched that number. Well, what we found since the pandemic, and this probably won't surprise any of you. That number has gone up rather dramatically. To about almost thirteen percent. And here in Visalia, it's reaching fourteen percent. And I don't say that to say that we don't want to identify those students by any means. It just says that the need is greater now. So we want to make sure that the work we're doing. Um, is effective, is efficient, and it's doing everything we can to make sure we're supporting these students. So the review itself kind of encapsulated the information in four main categories. The first one that really stood out was that organizational culture. What we found was there were seemed to be a disconnect between special education services and staff. Um, site staff, district staff. There didn't seem to be um a real cohesive connection into what all that needed to look like. The second one was systems alignment and clarity. You're gonna be hearing the word clarity quite a bit tonight. Myself and Mr. Mr. Thompson are gonna be talking about that in just a little bit. But what I mean by that is. Again, just that notion of everybody clearly understanding what should be taking place. The next one is human resources and capacity building. Another thing that we saw come out of the pandemic was staffing changes. Um, it's no secret that in the state of California, many teachers, most of our teachers in fact are in their first few years of education. We know special education teachers require additional specialized training and what we found was. We could do a better job in preparing those stu- those teachers to be successful in the classroom. And then finally, community and collaboration, other words that you were going to hear more about tonight. What the report indicated to us was we have opportunities to make our communication chain and our collaboration opportunities look a little bit different. So what you can anticipate seeing. Are some things in response to this. The first one. Is might there be an opportunity for us to really think a little bit differently about our organizational structure in the special education department? Organizing it in a way that potentially will give us better opportunities to get students what they need in a timely, more efficient manner. And I'm happy to say that with your support, we have been able to move forward in that area. So we're really excited about that. The next one is we're continuing to work with our consultant. We said a little bit earlier that one of the issues that we were lacking was that cohesion within the district, right? With general education support, with district, with site, with special education. We're really gonna work hard on what that's gonna look like. Mr. Shrum talked a little bit earlier about the importance of listening sessions and whatnot. We've done that quite a bit and that will continue to be our model as we move forward because again, we want to make sure as we're creating new systems and supports. Everybody's on part, everybody takes part in this new creation. That collaboration piece we spoke about, again, we want to make sure that this isn't done in isolation. We've got great things that have been going on in our school system, both in general education and special education. We just have opportunities to do some things a little bit differently, which hopefully will give us even more success with our special education students. And then finally, we want to make sure that as we're going down this road. We are continuing to use indicators that we will know that what we're doing is working, right? Gone are the days when we can look at something and just say, you know what? That looks good. I think I'm happy with that, right? We need to make sure that I can come to you in a few months and say, look, things are going great and here's the evidence to support that. When I talk to my families and we talk to our teachers and our students. We want to be able to show them very clearly, here's the things that we've added to make your child's acquisition into the educational system more successful. Here is how is it worked and here's the things that we're gonna do in the future to make it even better. So again, lots more to come. I wanted to kind of give you kind of where we have been, where we are now, and a little hint about what's coming in the future. So great things are coming and I look forward to coming back and sharing more with you. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Any questions, comments from the board? Thank you, Mr. De Mayo.
Pleasure.
Um, five point three, continuously improving our learning environment, Mr. Thompson, and I believe. Mr. Shrum has an introduction here.
Thank you, Madam President and uh board members and our community. This this is an important report. Uh, that Mark and Assistant Superintendent Thompson and De May are going to do. Um, as we know, you know, we we have been back this full year and um, I think. You know, as the year progressed, we saw increases in challenges on our campuses. Um, that, you know, maybe we weren't as prepared for as we could have been. Um, and we're working on that. We also heard the voices of our teachers a few weeks ago. Uh, clearly echoing that concern and we see it not only locally, but also across the nation. So what are we gonna do about that here in Visalia? Um, and one of the things uh that we've been reflective about is listening to voices. Because it's through those voices we learn what can we do better, what's working and what's not. And so as Assistant Superintendent Thompson begins to talk about this report, he's gonna share a little bit about. Some of the things that we did right away to finish strong. Uh, but then also what are the longer range things that we're doing over the course of the summer? So that we can start strong. Um, also want to to uh share my appreciation for our VUTA president. Uh, Greg Price, because over the course of the past few weeks. Uh, he has engaged with groups of teachers uh and brought them uh together and provided an opportunity for me to sit with them. Uh, along with members of the district staff and listen. And just talk about what's on their mind. along with members of the district staff and listen and just talk about what's on their mind, not only discipline related, right, but also other pieces in general. And I had a couple of teachers share with me, you know, that's the first opportunity we've had to like just really talk to district folks, and we really felt like our voice was heard. And so I want those teachers to know, we heard your voice, but also know that's not enough just to hear the voice, right? Now, what are we going to do about what we heard? And so that's the beginning of what this report is going to talk about. So didn't want this report to begin without expressing my appreciation to our VUTA partners for bringing teachers to us and partnering with us on, well, how are we going to do this together? Because it's from everything that happens in the classroom, to the school site, to the community and the district. And it's only when we work together and have those conversations that we're going to find solutions that work. We can find solutions without talking together, but they're not going to be effective, right? This is about what can we do together to help all of our kids be successful in the learning environment and our teachers be successful in that environment as well. So having said that, I will turn it over to Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. I'll just jump right in as we're ready to go here. So we get this up. So our topic is continuously improving our learning environments. As we always start with is our core beliefs. Obviously, equipping students and staff with educational tools necessary for achievement and growth, and also providing all students academic and social supports that are needed to be successful, along with knowing students by their name and connected to meaningful activities. And that does target into this tonight as well. So just how do we finish long, finish strong? One thing that we had right off was, as you guys had heard a few weeks ago from teachers, some concerns, but also we've heard it from our staff. And we really focused in on the high school level. We have what we had found is a group of students, typically ninth graders, a few 10th graders, that seem to be a little bit disengaged with their classes, meaning they didn't always seem to attend all their classes. They struggled. They went to some. And other classes, they found other places to try to find locations to hang out, be together, those type of things, and disengaged. And you know, your first initial reaction is, hey, just go to class, right? And that's always our focal point is like, obviously going to school, the purpose is to go to your classroom every single time. But that's a quick answer to a bigger question. And so that's what we kind of started off with and was just, what's going on exactly? And I will say, as we all are aware, COVID probably played a role in some of this as this is something we hadn't necessarily seen in the past before that. But we had that problem, and we recognized that that is a problem. It was a problem consistent across school campuses. So what we wanted to share was, so what do we do about that, right? So we had that conversation and say, well, what do we do? So on March 29th, that was the conversation we were having amongst a small group of us. What are we going to do? And our first response, to be very honest with you, we started brainstorming and solving the problem ourselves. And can I tell you, that was a misstep. That's not what you actually, that's our first natural reaction to most things is let's just get in a small group and figure it out. But what we did instead is on March 29th, we pulled in high school principals. We pulled in district leadership. We pulled in a group of us, actually right in this room. There's probably 25, 30 of us in the room. And we talked about this is our, this is a problem we're seeing on our campuses. What are all the possible solutions we could find? And you know what, when we did that, you know what we realized? We still didn't have everyone in the room that we needed. Because here was the reality of it. Then spring break hit, but what we realized that day is we haven't talked to the probably the most important people that can solve that problem. And that was the students that were standing outside the classrooms that weren't going into the classrooms. So on April 11th through the 14th, high school principals picked their trusted adult in their, in their building that they thought students would be really honest and transparent with them. And they pulled them in one on one to have conversations with them. Say, what's going on? How can we support you? Why are we, where are we at with this? How can, what can we do to make it so that you're getting your education? You're accessing it. You're not outside the room. You're in the room learning on that. On the seventh, so they did that from 11th through 14th. Each school site then developed their plan on how they were going to support these 10 to 15 students to get them to access their education. On the 17th, they then deployed that plan and built that out. As a district, we stood in a, in a stance of support, allowing our high school principals with their teams to develop their plan and say, and then we asked them the question is what resources do you need to make that happen? Some situations, it was we need an additional support person. There are some different pieces that came into play. Some was just some flexibility or, hey, is this okay for us to do on those questions? So again, those are our target was the ninth, it was mostly ninth graders that we were looking at. At each campus, this looks a touch different. Some outcomes. So again, that happened in April that we actually deployed and started. We had 54 students participating in this. I would love to tell you have 100% success rate. I would love to get there. We didn't get there quite yet, but we, we, we saw a lot of positive results as each one, and they're learning kind of through their plans as well. But what we did see is 35 of them improved their grades. We saw that 19 of them improved their grades enough to now get credits for those classes that they were going to get any credits for. Attendance improved and 30 of the students and reduced behaviors, 34 of them, their behaviors reduced. And, and we were not seeing the similar behaviors across the board. So there are some dramatic results. Again, these are students that did not feel connected, not engaged. The other piece of this is through those conversations, we learned a lot. And through this process, we're continually learning as they're still working every day on saying, how is this going to work? How does this not work? What's being successful at each campus and how we can support students? With that, I want to provide just a couple quotes. So on some campuses, what they did is they actually during those certain class periods, they actually pulled students into a singular classroom. Because some of our students, what we, we found is they struggle with switching through a bunch of different classrooms, being with a bunch of different students. And what they find themselves to be is they get distracted with different groups inside the room, those type things. And so one of them said, this class helped me to basically decrease the distractions, less stress for those couple periods, and it was allowed me to focus on my work. Another one, helped me actually complete my schoolwork. I feel like I wouldn't have missed as much school and wouldn't have had missed so many missed assignments if I had a class earlier in this year that helped me with this. And with that, we have some student quotes, but I actually have a teacher here tonight, Ms. Tori Johnson, which I'm asked to come up at Mount Whitney and just going to share. She's took on the challenge, which I want to say thank you first of all, to jump right into this and say, these are my kids. This, I want to support these students and I'm going to figure out a way. And did some innovative things with her class to support them in their other classes. So.
Good evening, Superintendent Schrum, Board President Gomoyen, Board members and guests. My name is Victoria Johnson, and I am the OCI teacher at Mount Whitney High School. First, I would like to thank you for being given the opportunity that I have been given to speak to you tonight. Four weeks ago, all four high schools were given the green light to help a group of students that were struggling academically and were frequently not in class. At Mount Whitney, administration picked 15 students to participate in this pilot program. With any new systems, there are some challenges, and we strive to do things better. Tonight, I'm here to tell you about the things that have worked at Mount Whitney. First, it is the dry erase board located in the front of my room. It lists students by ID and their six periods. If they are passing the class, they deploy and continue to the, to go to class. If they are not passing the class, they stay in B24 to get caught up. This gives myself, administration, students, and area supervisors a quick reference of how individuals are doing in my class by green or white cards, if they're passing or not, and where they should be, if they should be deployed or if they should be located in my classroom. We also track on this board the student's progress per class. It is updated every Friday. At Mount Whitney, we have used our long-term sub housed in my room. This allowed me the opportunity to talk with teachers and students when needed. She is also someone that is providing one-on-one support in addition with my help. In addition to this board and the, the dry erase board and the extra adult, I believe it's four Cs that have made our program successful. First, communication. There are three steps to communication. First, the communication with the student. Students must understand what the goal is being selected to be in this program and how we see this, how we see them being successful. Second, the communication between myself and their teachers. Since this program is in the beginning stages, I felt it was imperative to have face-to-face communication with the teacher, myself, and student when appropriate. And thirdly, with parents. It brings me and the parents great joy when they get a positive phone call when they're used to getting negative calls. The second part of that joy is the next morning when I see that student coming in with a huge smile because they got praised by the parents that night. Two, customizing. If a student is successful in a class, they remain in that class. The classes that they're, they're struggling with, we have customized with the direction from their teacher. We are allowed to give more one-on-one help for support that the student needs. For example, some kids need to stand up and some kids need to take more breaks, and this classroom setting allows for it. Three, compassion. In a regular class setting, teachers are not always able to know the students and their stories. Many of the students need some extra TLC. Each one of them comes with a story. Since this class size is small and there is flexibility, I am able to work with the students one-on-one and connect them with resources we have on our campus. I have been able to work with both our social worker as well as our school psychologists, connecting students with services right there at Mount Whitney. Four is confidence. I am truly blessed with the opportunity to be their biggest cheerleader in most cases. I'm able to praise them for the little milestones that they have achieved, and I see their confidence growing. This program gives the OCI teacher the ability to build their confidence so they will be able to go back to the classroom and be successful. In closing, I would like to share with what two students have shared. Kalise says, AOCI helped me actually do my work and turn in and complete it. If I would have had it earlier in the year, then I feel like I wouldn't have missed as much school and had so many missing assignments. Because the reason why I was failing some of my classes was because I didn't like being in there. Another student, Francisco, it helps me a lot staying in one class. I got half of my classes up. They should have done this in the beginning of the year for the people who never go to class. So Board, Mount Whitney promises to finish strong. Thank you for the opportunity.
It's exciting to hear, isn't it? And I just appreciate it's not just the system that's created, it's the people that are in there that are investing in our students each and every day, bringing them hope, compassion, and joy back to school as well. So we always talk about how we want to make sure all kids are connected, that they're known by name. And we just want to make sure that we do that for all students. Before, I'm going to hand it over here in just a moment to Mr. Demeo because this was a process. Remember I said at the beginning of this, on March 29th, our first initial reaction was to jump in and make solutions? But what we learned, as we already know this, and why this is called continuous improvement, is that we recognize we got to get out and keep talking to folks. We got to talk to our students. We got to talk to our teachers. We got to talk to our families. We got to keep talking and finding out what's really going on so that way we can make targeted solutions for them. Mr. Demeo is going to come up right now. This was a small cycle targeting some students at the end of the school year at the high school level. But he's going to share with you how we're going to start strong next year by using the similar model that we just used in a small space in a bigger space so that way we can make some decisions, choices, and, and system changes as we continue to work with discipline, behavior, and opportunities for students in the future. So Mr. Demeo.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, to Tori Leaf. So now I know what Mr. Schrum feels like when he has to follow the, the student performers. It's like, how do you follow Tori? But just as a, just as a quick reminder, guys, so Board members, y'all gave us permission to move forward with building out our OCI programs. Well, that's why. That's a success that we want to replicate. And when done correctly, it is amazing. So we're super excited about adding more of those opportunity classes for the coming year. So with that said, let's talk a little bit about expounding on what Mr. Thompson was sharing with us. So how do we start strong? So both Mark and I are blessed to be married to teachers in our district. And you know, and I know Mark's like me, we've talked about this before. You know, we go home each day and we talk about all the great things we do in our job and how awesome we are. And you know, everybody thinks we're rad because we're doing all these great things, right? But then when we talk about these things, it's not uncommon for my wife to say, what are you talking about? I don't know what that is. What do you mean that I've never seen that in that classroom? How does that impact me? So it really gave us pause to kind of think, huh, maybe there's something to that. Maybe I need to listen to my better half. So what that kind of turned into, and Kurt talked about this a little bit, my wife was part of one of those groups that we able, were able to listen to. So Mr. Price, our union president, set up opportunities for our middle schools, high schools, and elementary schools to get together and share with us. And we had an opportunity to kind of just take a listening stance. And as we've already heard tonight, as administrators, that's hard to do. We're problem solvers, right? Someone tells me something and I'm like, I got you. I'm going to take care of that situation. But this was bigger than that. We wanted to make sure that we clearly understood what was going on, what was taking place. On top of that, we also wanted to go a little bit further. So how can we collect even more information to make sure that we're clearly understanding what's going on and by the different constituents that really represent our school system? So up there, I just put some statistic for you. We heard back from 565 staff members. We heard back from almost 13,000 students. And finally, we heard back from 250 parents. And we asked them specific questions about what is the school experience like for you? How are you experiencing it? What's good, what's bad, that type of stuff? And what we recognized, what we gleaned from that, I alluded to this a little bit earlier, is the challenges that we have been experiencing, what our constituents are clearly telling us, kind of solidified in three different areas. And again, those are clarity, consistency, and communication. The clarity was what, what needs to be done and who's going to do it? So you know, I mentioned my wife talking about things. So what is it that is supposed to be taking place? What's the processes? What's the procedures? What's the system? And who's going to take part in that? And then consistency. It's so important for us to make sure that every child has an awesome experience. I, I think of my times as a site principal. And when parents would come to me and they'd say, you know, Mr. Demeo, you got to make sure I get Mrs. Belt for second grade because she's the best second grade teacher. And if my kid doesn't have Mrs. Belt, you know, her life's over, right? It was up to me to make sure, you know what? I'm going to take care of you. I guarantee you, every child, every teacher in second grade is going to be amazing, and they're going to have an equally awesome experience whether they get, you know, Mrs. Belt or Mrs. Brown or Mrs. Turner or whatever, right? The same thing holds true with this. We need to make sure that our systems provide those amazing educational opportunities for every child in every classroom on every campus. And then finally, communication. One of the things we heard over and over again was, wow, I, I didn't know that. I didn't realize that what was supposed to take place, or I didn't know that that was supposed to happen in this way. And, and this isn't my opportunity to blame anybody. For one, it needs, the blame needs to land a lot on us up here, not you guys. But recognizing that we all take part in this, right? So we need to make sure when we're communicating, how can we be sure that the system we're creating makes sure that everybody clearly understands what should be happening, what did happen, and what's going to happen as a result of that incident? And how can we make it different in the future? So what I want you to be thinking about for the start of the school year, right? This isn't something that we're saying it's going to take us 10 years to get this fixed. It's going to see, you're going to see some wonderful things happening for the start of the school year. Our, our saying right now is we're going to make sure the year starts strong. So how that will look is you're going to see things like improved student outcomes because the whole point of this is to make sure our students are more successful at schools, right? That's why we're all here. We want them to get smarter. We want them to feel better about what's going on. We want them to do well so that they have opportunities to do whatever they want once they're done with their educational experience with us. We're, to do that, we're going to make sure we revise and enhance policies, procedures, staff development to make sure that in order to get to the end result, how can we make sure that the journey to get there is strong? And we're going to be doing that by adding different layers of support. So how can we make sure we're clearly establishing roles and responsibility? What's that going to look like? Community partnerships. We've done some amazing things. Mr. Schrum talked a little bit before about those partnerships we have set up with our collegiate areas in, in the city. We've also done some great things with some of our partners in the community who have really embraced the idea of supporting our kiddos, right? Because we know the seven hours we have students in a day is not enough. How can we make sure we're really, really taking advantage of the wonderful talent we have in the city of Visalia? And making sure we have those additional resources for kids. We've talked a lot about the students coming out of the pandemic in the few, in the past few years. We know their needs are significant, primarily when we were talking about mental health supports. So we're excited to be able to say that we've got lots of new and improved and enhanced supports for our kiddos so that we are not allowing those mental health type challenges to hold students back. We're going to get them the help they need, get them on the right path and make sure they're successful in school. And finally, when you're going to see it, you're going to see this starting August 1st, when we come back to our school system. It's an ongoing thing. We're going to be. It's an ongoing thing. We're going to be continuing to make it better and stronger. But great things are happening and it's because of the partnerships we have set up with our teachers, our classified staff, our managers and more importantly, our students and our parents. And with that said, that concludes our report. Might there be any questions from myself or Mr. Thompson?
Questions, Ford? Comment?
Quick comment was just, thank you. You know, I think we expect our students, of course, to be learners and our teachers and that we're modeling that, you know, kind of from the top is just very refreshing and I think gets to better continuous improvement process. So thank you.
Agreed.
And I'd like to thank you, Mr. Price, for helping us make those connections with teachers. And Mr. Price and I have been in this district a long time and we've talked about these issues. And these, I lose sleep over these kids and I feel very hopeful. I feel like things are going to be different for our, our kids that are having trouble coping in the classroom. So thank you very much.
Pleasure.
General, six, general public comment. General public comment and any school-related topic may be heard at this time. The board asked that any public comment and any item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act, California's open public meeting law, board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is limited to receiving such comments and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation, public comment and understanding of the board's responsibility. Pursuant, the board, to board policy, the board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes, individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. I don't believe we have any public comment. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull any consent item? Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On a motion by board member Naylor, second by board member Otto, all in favor? Oh, oh, it's Vegas, sorry. All in favor?
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Okay, let me get to the right place here. Okay, we have our student representative board. Mr. Towanda Charamuka of LD High School could not make it tonight. And so, Mr. Cameron Hood, we thank you for coming tonight and we're looking forward to your board report.
Glad to be back again. Reporting from Elie Monte High School, Elie Monte is celebrating the class of 2023 for their senior week. The week began with the reflections assembly on Monday. Senior sunset is currently happening, I believe. The senior barbecue is Wednesday. And the week will finish off with a lunch, with a school-wide lunch carnival on Friday. Golden West also has an incredibly busy week with senior sunset this Wednesday at 6:30. Tonight at 5 o'clock, there was a dance show in the mini gym. Every performance was student choreographed and performed and directed, which was an incredible thing to see. The students all come together and take part in something that they get to be proud of. This Friday, Golden West Choir has their spring show titled On Broadway, which will feature songs from an assortment of musicals and will be performed at LJ Williams Theater. Last Friday was a combined concert with Golden West and Valley Oaks Orchestra titled The Music of Mexico, which is very well attended and impeccably performed. Mount Whitney's High School's Spring Choir Show was a wonderful final show for Mount Whitney Choir students this year. It was choreographed by Mount Whitney Dance Team students. This Friday, their dance program will have their annual student showcase in the gym, where students will have the opportunity to showcase their own choreography. Mount Whitney softball senior Brea Grimsley, I'm not sure if I said that right, I'm sorry, will, will sign to attend and play with CSU Monterey Bay this week. Mount Whitney's Visual and Performing Arts Assembly was another one to remember with performances from all visual and performing arts departments and a video showcase for our visual arts classes. Redwood hosted their annual log assembly last week and dedicated the yearbook to Mrs. Vera, Mr. Eastman and Mr. McDonald. Our City Boys Baseball play in the CIF Division One State Semifinals today at 4:30. Vespas take place this Saturday at 4:00 PM in the LJ Williams Theater. Olivia Signs, Ryan Turner and Sierra Nelson were recognized at lunch with a signing ceremony. And the Redwood Drama Class hosted their one act, I Sure Hope It Does, last weekend with acts titled We Demand Death Too On Demand and Bad Things Happen to Good Actors. So Sequoia had a group of students to visit and work at Dry Creek in Tulare. This past weekend, Sequoia students visited Kewee Oaks Preserve and assist and work there as well. Black Student Association was treated to a meal for their hard work during the year. And Juven Noble had the year-end ceremony and celebration. From VCIS, as athletic playoffs for CIF are beginning to wrap up, VCIS wanted to highlight the over 50 student athletes from VCIS who participated on an athletic team at their comprehensive high school area of residence throughout the school year. We are proud of their hard work, dedication and championships they have earned while being a VCIS Eagle. On Friday, May 19th, BUSD's CTE Department hosted the annual pinning ceremony for 42 certified nursing assistant, medical assistant and pharmacy tech students from VCIS. This was a joint celebration where Mount Whitney CNA and MA programs pinned their students as well representing for all four comprehensive high schools. Tomorrow, 40 VCIS students will attend grad night at the Disneyland Resort, the largest group to ever attend the event in VCIS history. VCIS staff and students enjoyed Superintendent Schrum's visits to the east and west campuses recently and are encouraging students to embrace the finish strong campaign as they continue to graduate students every day heading into their commencement ceremony on Monday, June 5th. Vtech FFA had nine student interviews for a grant to raise a livestock animal for the Tulare County Fair. All nine students received the grant with five showing sheep, two showing hogs and two showing dairy cattle. About 32 of Vtech students will be recognized tomorrow night and receive scholarships from the Vtech Scholarship Foundation. Vtech's FFA will be hosting Goat Yoga tomorrow during lunch to help students unwind before finals. And Vtech's FF Way had four American degree recipients this year, which is the highest award they can receive in the FFA and passed out about 356 certifications at their banquet on the 9th of May. And two more things. Turn that off. These are personal, but prom was a huge success and a huge thank you to all the high schools that came out and helped to set up and brought all their amazing students. And today was the Job Fair at Mount Whitney, which I went to, a bunch of my friends went to. And I heard it was really well-attended and was very good to have. So thank you all for that. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Cameron, when is the, where and when is the goat yoga? We like that.
Tomorrow during lunch.
At Vtech?
At Vtech, yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, we'll move on to item nine, board reports. Miss, Board Member Vegas.
Thank you, President Gomoyen. Just wanted to also say thank you to all of our teachers. Part of that project with those empathy interviews, so important, reminds me of the story of Riverway a few weeks ago. And so I look forward to continuing to listening to our students for solutions moving forward. Just one thing I quickly wanted to plug was tomorrow's VYS Visalia Services Open House from 12 to 5:00 PM. So for anybody interested in coming out to attend, there's going to be food, clinic, community vendors, booths. So, you know, mental health is so important to our students, to our staff and our community. So I highly encourage you to attend if you're available. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Otto?
Yeah, attended many of the events that Superintendent Schrum outlined in his early report. Wanted to make two additional comments. Number one, wanted to say thank you to our classified folks. This is the beginning of Classified School Employee Week and our CSCA Chapter 83 is a great example of, of that work well done. Many times classified folks do work that isn't seen and it's only noticed when it's not done well. Luckily, that doesn't happen very often because our folks are really, really good. And to pitch into Cameron's or Mr. Hood's report on prom, folks might not know that our prom in this district is for all high schools. It's not one school at a time like is the tradition in many school districts. It's a unique thing where schools can come together in the sense of fun prom into school year spirit. And it's a wonderful, wonderful thing. It's, it's a big, great event for kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Belt?
Well, I echo that this has been, this is the month of celebration. And so we've done so many different events. I appreciate getting text messages every day to remind me what I signed up to go to. But I also want to make sure that Ms. Garza knows that noodles died. You can come into Mrs. Belt's third grade classroom now and not be afraid of the snake. That was part of, again, the education process, because all those third graders learn what life is like, the cycle of life. I would also make sure I give a thank you to Mr. Demeo and his entire team of rethinking special ed. There's been a lot of concern about how we are able to give the best we can to all of our students and how we can blend that and continually to actually see it at an excellent level. I really appreciate. Our BIAs, that's an interesting addition that we've talked about, discipline. We, I had an email just two days ago asking, where can I find what you talked about in the board meeting here a month ago? The discipline tiers and the layout and the information. And we discovered that with our new website being updated, it got lost. It was no longer there, but within a few hours, it was all fixed. And that parent was able to find the resource that we said is available. And that's the other important thing. We want to continue to be very transparent about, there are a lot of good things. And that's what these next several days, I know we all have seven more commitments, commencements to attend in the next 10 days. But it'll all be a celebration of all the good things that Visalia did. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Kasper Salena? Board Member Naylor?
I just want to also reiterate what Dr. Otto said. Just thank you for our classified staff. This is Classified Appreciation Week and we, we do notice all the hard work that you do to keep our schools going. I forgot to do a shout out to FFA, Elie Monte High School. They did an amazing job at their FFA Awards where they, it really shows how we were making connections with students. Same thing with our automotive partnership. Had a lot of students, a lot of community there. Really appreciate that because that's what it's all about. And I just want to remind everybody that we do have that strategic plan survey on our website. Please, please, please go to our website, take that survey, because that's how things change. And we need the community input and student input on those surveys. There's, yeah, there is two of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Gabby?
Yes, I want to echo what Superintendent Schrum said about the music festival. I mean, some traditions do stand the test of time and it's not like technology-enhanced or anything. It's just kids singing and it's awesome. And even watching the music teacher sing and kind of like lead them, it's amazing. And yes, I remember being there as a fourth grader and this year watching my, my kids. Shout out to the ELOP program. If parents, if you are not paying attention for the summer, for fall starting, they have two new agreements. One is with South Valley Aquatics for our middle schoolers to get the opportunity to start playing water polo. That's just amazing. And NJB, which is really just a quality basketball program. And so really getting our kids involved in some of these high-quality kind of experiences where they can really learn, you know, kind of the fundamentals and how to play these sports, just awesome connections being made there. And lastly, Vtech Lunch is at 12:13 tomorrow, if anybody would like to go to Goat Yoga.
Thank you, Board Member Gabby. I, I just want to take the time to thank the board for the hard work that we did on Friday. That was amazing. Thank you, Executive. Well, thank you Cabinet that was there to just guide us. And I particularly want to give a thank you to Brian Phillips and Vicky Leoni because I really learned a lot, gave me a lot to think about. And as I walked away from that thing, I have to say I have so much more value for our CTE pathways and academies. Just going to some of these commencements and seeing that these, these students are job-ready. They're going to have jobs and some of them already have jobs by completing a medical pathway or an auto pathway. So I just want to thank you for that, that CTE department. Thank you for all the hard work you do. Yeah, we're doing amazing things for our kids. So thank you. Superintendent Schrum?
This is our last board meeting before the end of the school year, believe it or not. And I just want to say shout out to all of our students, our teachers, our families, everyone working hard this year. Lots of things to celebrate and lots of things to reflect on and improve as we move forward together. And so I wish everyone a safe promotion, graduation season and looking forward to finishing these last few days strong, going into summer and then getting ready to kick off the next school year. It'll be here before we know it, right? And, but thank you for the opportunity to lead with the leadership of this board and we're going to finish strong.
Thank you. 11, item 11.1, recommended suspended expulsion. Still have a motion?
So moved?
I'll second. Go ahead, Joy. Okay, I second.
On a motion by Board Member Otto, second by Kasper Salena on favor?
Student Board Representative abstained and motion passes unanimously.
Great. 12.1, review of the Governor's May revision to the 2023-24 state budget proposal. Mr. Hernandez?
Good evening, President Gomoyen, members of the board, Superintendent Schrum. Tonight, we are going to do just a quick update on the Governor's May revision as part of the state budget development process. He does his initial proposal in January and then looks to see how the economy is churning and then provides an update in May. And so that's where we're at in our budget development process. And as we've talked about, it relates to the board's core beliefs and commitments through, you know, the budget is how the board provides the resources to make these things happen. So we'll go through the proposal and then talk about next steps. So just an update on where we are in our kind of budget development process. We are here. Next board meeting, we will bring back the first reading of the, of the district's budget for 2324 as well as the LCAP. So jump right into, you know, some of the differences between January and May. As we've all kind of heard, the state economy has, has not performed up to expectation. In fact, it's, it's in a little bit more deficit position as on the state level in May as it was in January. About a $10 billion additional budget problem. And the state adjusts their, their budget to, to, to solve this. So they, they won't adopt the deficit budget. They will actually make reductions and, and shifts and deferrals and other things that we've heard about to get to a balanced budget. But this is the challenge that they're working with right now. And again, these numbers are not going to be fully known until all of tax revenues come in, which, which is delayed now to October. So this is what we know today. Difference in the cost of living adjustment, the COLA was 8.13, 8.22 in May. The, there wasn't a lot to the January budget proposal. If you remember, there was very few changes. But also some reductions. So reduction in some one-time funds with the Arts and Music Block Grant was a reduction of 34% in January. That's increased to 50%. So it's about $8 million for Visalia. A reduction in the Learning Recovery Grant, that wasn't proposed in January, but he's brought that forward this in May as a 30% reduction. So that's about a $12 million reduction. Again, those are one-time funds that the district has not spent any of that funding yet. That was planned to be spent in some of these out years. No change to the LCFF Equity Multiplier. We will receive some of these funds. We don't have them. We won't build those into the budget until we have an adopted state budget. And then again, Universal Transitional Kindergarten, there wasn't any change to that. But I just wanted to kind of give us an update where we are. We are in kind of year two of this implementation. So in 2425, or I'm sorry, 2324, the students who turn five between September 2nd and April 2nd, so moving up two months and then two more years until we're at full implementation of TK. Some of the other areas and assumptions that we're using, there's been no change to the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. So that funding continues to be ongoing. Proposition 28, slight reduction just because it's based off of the overall state. Proposition twenty-eight, slight reduction just because it's based off of the overall state economy. We will still have a reserve cap in place of ten percent for next year. The good news is we've had no adjustments to, no major adjustments to pension costs. So STIRS stayed flat, PERS had a slight increase, and no increase to the district's health and welfare costs. So that's allowed us to do some additional things as we've, as we've seen in our, in our salary adjustments this year. And then for enrollment, we, we are pretty flat in enrollment, increasing in TK. But still generally, our ADA is down from nineteen, twenty, but up three percent this year. So different trend there. So as I mentioned, we'll come back in, in the next board meeting with our first reading of the budget. The state will have a signed budget by June fifteenth or an adopted budget by June fifteenth, and the government will sign by the thirtieth. And then we'll come back on the twenty-seventh to adopt the district's budget in June. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Twelve point two, Resolution to Establish Salary for Superintendent Assistant Superintendents, Classified Chiefs, District Managers, Confidential Employees, Effective July first, twenty twenty-three, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Mr. Dillon.
Thank you, Board President Gomoyen, Superintendent Schrum, members of the board. Bring before you resolution, as you stated, Board President Gomoyen, requesting that the board take action to adopt the following resolution in working with our, our other bargaining units where we've landed for our managers going into this year is to do a cost of living adjustment at the eight point two two that Mr. Hernandez just referenced that the state has put forth. In addition to, the only other piece outlined is that the management and confidential employees who during the time when this resolution goes into effect, as long as they remain in paid status for at least seventy-five percent of this current school year, they would then go up that step into the following school year.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt and approve the resolution and salary schedule on the matter of the salary and work year for district managers, assistant superintendents, superintendent, classified chiefs, class confidential employees, effective July first, twenty twenty-three, for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four?
I will make that motion, President Gomoyen.
I'll second.
Okay, on a motion by Board Member Casper Saleno, second by Board Member Naylor, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Twelve point three, Employment Agreement Assistant Superintendent of Education Services. This item is the board's discussion and possible approval of an employee agreement with Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services Andrew Dumeo. The district legal counsel will present the item.
Good evening, trustees. Pleased to be here tonight. On the next four items, the law requires an oral summary for executive contracts in open session of the key financial provisions of the proposed employment agreements. So that's what I'm going to be reading through and presenting. The key material terms of the employment agreement for Mr. Dumeo are as follows. Term is for four years from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the assistant superintendent shall be placed on step two of the assistant superintendent's salary schedule, which was just approved. And the annual base salary will be $248,155. Per the terms of his existing contract, this salary reflects a merit increase for the assistant superintendent for a satisfactory evaluation as well as a cost of living increase based upon the salary schedules that were just adopted by the board. In addition, the assistant superintendent's base salary, to his base salary, the assistant superintendent shall be entitled to $400 per year if the assistant superintendent possesses a master's degree or $650 per year if the assistant superintendent possesses a doctoral degree. The assistant superintendent shall participate in the district's total compensation program on the same terms and conditions as all other district certificated managers. Since the assistant superintendent participates in the total compensation program, the assistant superintendent shall not be entitled to any district contribution towards health and welfare benefits. The assistant superintendent shall receive a term life insurance policy with a death benefit equal to $125,000. The district will pay the assistant superintendent's dues to participate in up to one professional, educational, or community service organization approved by the superintendent. And the assistant superintendent shall receive $200 per month as an automobile allowance for performance of district's services within the scope of the assistant superintendent's employment. This concludes the summary of the employment agreement.
Is there any public comment? Is there a motion to approve this contract?
I move.
I'll second.
On a motion by Miss, Board Member Belt, second by Board Member Casper Saleno, all in favor. Did I miss something? Oh, is there any discussion? Okay, vote.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Okay, twelve point four, Employment Agreement Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. This item is the board's discussion and possible approval of the employment agreement with Assistant Superintendent Human Resources Development Benjamin Dillon. The district's legal counsel will present this item.
Thank you once again. And this may sound familiar. The employment agreements are, are quite similar for Mr. Dillon. And again, the law requires that the key financial provisions are summarized in open session. Number one, the term is for four years from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the assistant superintendent shall be placed at step two of the superintendent's salary schedule with a base salary of $248,155. Per the terms of his existing contract, the salary reflects a merit increase for the assistant superintendent for a satisfactory evaluation as well as a cost of living increase based upon the salary schedules adopted by the board earlier in this meeting. In addition to the assistant superintendent's base salary, the assistant superintendent shall be entitled to $400 per year if the assistant superintendent possesses a master's degree or $650 per year if the assistant superintendent possesses a doctoral degree. The assistant superintendent shall participate in the district's total compensation program. Since the assistant superintendent participates in the total compensation program, he shall not be entitled to any district contribution towards health and welfare benefits. Assistant superintendent shall receive a term life insurance policy with a death benefit equal to $125,000. The district will pay the assistant superintendent's dues to participate in up to one professional, educational, or community service organization. And the assistant superintendent shall receive $200 per month as an automobile allowance for performance of district services within the scope of his employment. This concludes the summary.
Is there any public comment? Is there a motion to approve this contract?
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? On a motion by Board Member Casper Saleno, on a second by Board Member Gabby, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Item twelve point five, Employment Agreement Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Leadership. This item in the board's discussion and possible approval and employment agreement with Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Leadership Mark Thompson, the district's legal counsel will present this item.
Okay, and for Mr. Thompson, I'm going to read the key material terms, which are slightly different. So the term is for four years from July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the assistant superintendent shall be placed on step three of the assistant superintendent's salary schedule and the annual base salary shall be $254,970. Per the terms of his existing contract, the salary reflects a merit increase for the assistant superintendent for a satisfactory evaluation as well as a cost of living increase based upon the salary schedules adopted by the board earlier in this meeting. The addition, in addition to the, to the base salary, the assistant superintendent shall be entitled to $400 per year if the assistant superintendent possesses a master's degree, $650 per year if the assistant superintendent possesses a doctoral degree. The assistant superintendent shall participate in the district's total compensation program, meaning that the assistant superintendent shall not be entitled to any district contribution towards health and welfare benefits. The assistant superintendent shall receive a term life insurance policy with a death benefit equal to $125,000. The district will pay the assistant superintendent's dues to participate in up to one professional, educational, or community service organization approved by the superintendent. And the assistant superintendent shall receive $200 per month as an automobile allowance for performance of district services within the scope of employment. This concludes the summary for this employment agreement.
Is there any public comment? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? On a motion by Board Member Naylor, second by Board Member Vegas, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
One more. Employment Agreement Superintendent. This item is the board's discussion and possible approval and employment agreement with Superintendent William Kirk Schrum. The district legal counsel will present this item.
Okay. The key material terms of the employment agreement are as follows, and this is the oral report required. The term is for four years from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the superintendent shall be placed on step two of the superintendent's salary schedule and the superintendent's annual base salary shall be $336,757. Per the terms of his existing contract, the salary reflects a merit increase for the superintendent for a satisfactory evaluation as well as a cost of living increase based upon the salary schedules adopted by the board earlier in this meeting. In addition to the superintendent's base salary, the superintendent shall be entitled to $400 per year if the superintendent possesses a master's degree or $650 per year if the superintendent possesses a doctoral degree. The superintendent shall participate in the district's total compensation program on the same terms and conditions as all other district certificated managers. Since the superintendent participates in the district's total compensation program, the superintendent shall not be entitled to any district contribution towards health and welfare benefits. The superintendent shall receive a term life insurance policy with a death benefit equal to $125,000. The district will pay the superintendent's dues to participate in up to four professional, educational, or community service organizations approved by the board. And the superintendent shall receive $200 per month as an automobile allowance for performance of district services within the scope of the superintendent's employment. This concludes the summary of the superintendent's employment agreement.
Is there any public comment? Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? On a motion by Board Member Naylor, second by Board Member Vegas, all in favor to approve this contract?
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Twelve point seven, Warrant List.
This is our routine item to adopt the warrants from April first through April twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to accept the warrant list?
I'll second.
Okay, on a motion by Board Member Odo, second by Casper Saleno, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes.
Oh, I didn't vote?
It still passes. With, motion passes, six yes and one abstention.
Thank you, and thank you for attending this evening. This meeting is adjourned.